Good evening and welcome to this edition of the Infocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. I'm Eric Marsh, Executive Director of Whitewater Community Television, and glad you're able to join us as we continue looking at candidates in contested races. Tonight, we'll be speaking with two people who are running for Wayne County Council, District 3, which is a fairly large area in Wayne County. They're covering from Western Wayne County all the way through parts of Richmond, so you'll see their signs all along the way. Want to remind you that actually, we're down to this week and next week will be our last Infocus Candidate Forum. Next week, we'll be speaking with two candidates running for Indiana State Senate, District 27. That show will begin at 6:00, and it will last one hour, and that will be the end of it for us. So at that point, it's all down to the voting, and actually, the voting has begun. In-person absentee voting has begun. You can do that Mondays, 8:30 to 5:00 p.m., Tuesday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 at the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street. Also, there are two Saturdays listed there. Next Saturday, October 27th, and the following Saturday after that, November 3rd. That's from 9:00 to 4:00. The last day for that is November 5th. And beginning next week, we'll tell you where the vote centers are going to be and where you can do additional voting on Election Day. But if you need more information about locations, call 973-9304. This is a conversation, a dialogue. We've been through this for a number of weeks, so we want you to be a part of this. So remember, our phone lines are open. You can also provide questions on Facebook as well as Twitter, and we'll try to get to as many of those as we possibly can. Joining me this evening, once again, from the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce and the Issues and Advocacy Committee, Brian Ballinger. Thanks for being here, Brian.
Thank you, Eric. It's good to be here.
Glad to have you back. And the candidates running for Wayne County Council, District 3, on the Republican side, Beth Leisure. Good to see you again.
Hi, Eric. Good to be here.
And Nick Elder. Sir, how are you this evening?
I'm really good, Eric. Thanks.
Great. We're gonna open this one the same way as we have in the past. We're gonna give the candidates a minute to a minute and a half to kind of tell you whatever it is they think you need to know about them, and then we'll get into the questioning. So Beth, we will start with you.
All right. Hi. My name's Beth Leisure. I'm from the Cambridge City area. I was born and raised in Pershing, Indiana. I am a business owner. My husband and I have owned business over 30 years, and I am involved in the Cambridge City Chamber of Commerce. I'm the president and have been for the last six years. I currently serve on the Wayne County Tourism Board as Board President, and I am Cambridge's appointment to the EDC. And I also serve on the Redevelopment Commission that deals with the TIF funds in Wayne County. And I have been married to my husband for 40 years and have two children grown and seven grandchildren, a busy life, but I'm ready to do this job.
Okay. Thank you. And Nick.
How you doing? My name's Nick Elder. I grew up in Cincinnati. After I graduated high school, I went off to the United States Navy, and I had the amazing privilege of serving for eight years as a United States Navy Hospital Corpsman, a combat medic. I served with multiple Marine Corps units, deploying to Iraq, Fallujah, Iraq twice. My first deployment, I was involved in helicopter evacuations out of the city of Fallujah, evacuating wounded Marines. And my second deployment, I was involved in police transition teams where we lived with and were embedded with the Iraqi police and trained them in doing their jobs. I was on active duty, and I was able to get my undergraduate degree. I had my bachelor's degree in finance. And after I exited active duty, I had the amazing privilege and opportunity to utilize the GI Bill, and the GI Bill paid for grad school, and I got my master's degree in Business Administration. Tony and I are very pleased to live in Milton, and we own an antique shop in Cambridge City. Some of the things I really enjoy being a part of. I sit on the board of the Western Wayne Dollars for Scholars. I'm in a mentorship program at Western Wayne Elementary School where I mentor a young man, have lunch with him in a mentorium, and just really excited to get this started and really, really excited to get to work for the people in Wayne County.
Thank you both. Glad to have you both here. Glad you put your names on the ballot and you're willing to go through this process. If Brian will allow me, I'd like to try to get a couple of establishing questions here out real quick. As best as I can tell, neither one of you have actually held public office. I know you ran for Wayne County Council during the last election cycle, Beth. Since neither of you have actually held public office, why don't you start by just giving us an idea of what you've done to prepare yourself for the office that you want to hold? And Nick, we'll start with you, then come this way, and we'll just go back and forth.
Well, you know, Eric, it's kind of twofold. Financially, I think that my education has prepared me for certainly being able to handle finances and being able to handle and understand and comprehend budgets. I've run multimillion-dollar businesses with major Fortune 500 companies in the clothing business. I've done retail my entire life outside of the Navy, been in the retail sector. So I think that managing those very large businesses and those very large budgets have really put me in a position where I'm able to do that. My service piece of this is more critical to me. Having served in leadership capacities in the military, I think not just me, but all military veterans come to the table with a certain set of skills that they've developed, leading troops in combat and being involved in very stressful situations. So I think that that has given me an incredible push towards this level of service.
Well, I have spent my time the last couple of years making sure that I understand exactly what this position involves. I have gone to almost every council meeting. I've sat through the Finance Committee meetings. I've sat through the employee meetings, and I have gone through the budget hearings with them this year. Since I serve on the EDC and I serve on the tourism, both their budgets come through the county. And just my experience as an entrepreneur over the years, I have dealt with budgets, payroll, all those kinds of things, and employees. And I just feel like that that's where the rubber meets the road is here on this level, knowing what this job consists of and what it takes to do it.
Okay. Second question I was gonna ask, Nick kind of already answered, but I'll put it to you. What do you think is the most important skill set that you have that would make you an effective Wayne County Council member?
I have a commitment to serve. When I start something, I stick with it and see it through, and I also feel like there's a lot of questions asked of candidates when you haven't been in the job yet and you're not sure of every detail. But I like to see both sides of every situation that arises before you make a judgment on things and make sure you have all the facts before you make decisions that affect people and their tax dollars.
Okay. I feel like you kind of answered it, but I'm gonna put it to you anyway. What do you think is the most important skill set that you have that would make you an effective Wayne County Council member?
I think interpersonal skills. I think, you know, we can talk numbers all day, but I think, you know, one thing that I think is missing from a lot of our current political structure is remembering who we're working for. And so I think being able to listen and get into people's lives and sit on their front porches and hear them talk, I think those interpersonal skills are extremely, extremely important.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to, my first question, maybe back it up just a little bit. If you could tell our viewers, educate us. What is the function of a council member? What does Wayne County Council do?
I think we're starting with you on this one. And we're just gonna go back and forth between the questions.
So the function of Wayne County Council, so it's twofold. So you have the commissioners that run sort of the day-to-day operations, and how I describe it to people on the campaign trail, because you're right, the vast majority of folks are having a difficult time understanding what each member of government does.
Right.
And Brian, what I try to do is tell them that there's three county commissioners that run day-to-day operations, and the county council runs the financial piece of it. The way I describe it to folks in every house I go to is if they want to buy a new dump truck or a new piece of equipment over at the Highway Department, the easiest way to understand it is they would go, the commissioners would say that's something we want to think about doing, and we would find it in the budget in the county council. Sort of the rough estimate of it.
Beth, how would you add to that?
Well, because the council is just the financial body of the county, I sat through all these budget hearings, and people in every department come and they've got needs and they have new things they want to do, and they need more employees or things like that. And so it's really getting down to the wire with the people and the employees. The other elected officials rely on you to fund their budgets. So it's taken what we have and distributing it to the best of our ability to make things work smoothly in the county.
You're watching the Infocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates running for Wayne County Council, District 3. Nick Elder on the Democrat's side, Beth Leisure on the Republican's side. I'm sitting with Brian Ballinger, representing the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. Keep going.
Okay. Next question. I've been, or it's been suggested that some of our departments, particularly when it comes to workforce, perhaps are undercompensated and possibly even training individuals to then later go to another area, perhaps not even in this community, being trained by our dollars and then becoming an asset to another community. So how do we confront that to make sure that that doesn't happen?
The current process in which people are hired is all laid out by the county council. But they have, we have received a study this year from the Kent Irwin Study that has allowed us to bring wages of the lower end, for sure, up more in par with people in the community, other jobs in our community and like counties about the same size, so that we are more on par with those jobs. Our benefits package is amazing, and there is gonna be a study put out, really just a paper to every employee to show them exactly, dollar-wise, what their benefits are worth to them, because I think that means a lot nowadays in people, that they have the proper insurance coverage and have benefits with their job. When you're dealing with elected officials, they are those department heads, and that becomes their jobs. I think we need to encourage them to, you know, make sure that they're doing everything they can to retain the employees once that we hire them.
Nick?
You know, when I was like canvassing, I talked to a gentleman that works at the Wayne County Jail, just happened to go to his house, and he explains to me that when he gets hired and this road deputy get hired, they may get paid the same when they first start, but as we progress, that jail deputy is not getting the same pay in the same time in service as the road deputy. So there are some pay discrepancies that we need to look at. I think when you look at our, for instance, our Highway Department, and I was really proud of those highway workers, Highway Department workers that showed up at a recent council meeting a couple of months ago before the primaries, you know, they show up and, in a sense, voice their opinion and sort of demand action on their pay. And I'm really proud of them for doing that, because if we want to hire and keep the best employees we have, it is our responsibility to make sure they're paid up to standards.
If I can do a quick follow-up on that. As you begin to raise the pay of the workers and make sure that they have decent benefits, and as we talk to school board, potential school board members, you heard the term a lot, "They don't do this job to get rich, they don't do this job to get rich." And people don't go into government work necessarily to get rich, but if the county's able to keep wages at a certain level, it allows them to be a little bit more frugal with the taxpayers' money. How do you balance what your workers should get, who are also voters and who are also residents in the county, with keeping a certain amount of money so that the county can do its business?
I think it's twofold. First of all, I think when we talk about having the department heads keeping us abreast of the pay issues and abreast of their hiring issues, you know, when I was a regional sales director, if I had listened to all of my store managers at face value for what their sales associates needed, I would have missed a lot of those issues down here. So I think it's incredibly important to come in and not just talk to the folks that are in those department heads, but actually get on the ground with those folks that are driving the bulldozers, those folks that are driving the dump trucks, those deputies that are braving out on the streets right now. It's important to get into those folks and see what they need. I think as long as we're competitive with specifically government communities around us, different government entities in other counties specifically, I think that that's perfectly acceptable as long as we're up to standard with what they can make anywhere else.
Repeat your question.
There's a balancing act between paying a fair wage and making sure that the county has enough money. Every time you hire somebody, every time you give them a raise, that takes away money that could be in your rainy day fund or that could go to other things. How do you look at that balance between the employee and the dollars that you need to actually do the work of the county business?
Well, I feel like if we bring our wages more competitive with, on the scale of other people in the county and other counties, then they're also, it should be expected more. And I think we have to make sure that we're not just hiring people to do other jobs that couldn't be done by people that we already have. I think there's, that we need to look at the productivity and, you know, there's only, there's a cap on employees that we can have, but there's just not money to hire more people. So I think we're gonna have to find more creative ways in these departments to do the work.
Okay. Okay, the next question, it's been somewhat of a, I guess we might say, a confrontational question, because, and I see both sides of this, and of course, I'm speaking of the food and beverage tax issue. There are those on one side that see it merely as a tax, and I don't want to pay more tax dollars. And then there are community leaders, business leaders that I speak with, and they bring up the importance of quality of life, quality of place. And so then we have this dialogue. How do we confront it? Is it the right thing to do? Is it not the right thing to do? Is it good for the community or is it just simply another tax that really, in the long run, doesn't benefit the community? So I guess my two questions. First of all, do you agree with the proposal? Not necessarily, perhaps as it's written, because I realize there's a lot of questions about how the current proposal is written, but just in general, do you support the food and beverage tax? And if so, if you were elected, how would you implement that conversation at the Wayne County Council?
Now, there's not a formal resolution that's been presented by anybody yet. I understand that. I know it's council's position that they are not going to consider it in its current state, because our legislation was written a long time ago, and it does allow the city to come in and pull out their 1% and only leave the rest of that for the fringe of the county. I'm not gonna say that I don't support it, because I think it can do a lot of good, but it needs a proper plan. You can't ask people to give you, say it's gonna generate $2 million, maybe a million of it's coming from out-of-town people who visit, which is awesome, but the other half may be coming from our residents. And I don't think you can ask people to pay that unless you tell them what they're gonna get for it, number one. On the flip side of the coin, we pay it many places we go and never even know it, don't miss it, don't even realize we paid it. In Marion County, it's 2%, Henry County's 1%. Counties who have it say they don't know why we don't do it and can't believe we haven't ever enacted it. There's a lot of both sides of the coin, but when it comes down to it, I go in lumpy's and eat. You know, those people eat there every day, and all they can see is their pockets, they're on a fixed income. And to them, they may never see the direct results of those monies being spent on things to keep people here, but if we don't keep the population in our county, get attraction, retention of workers, have things that make people want to live here and work here and move here, build houses here, pay property taxes here, then we're also not going to have, yet we're not gonna have money to deal with, you know, if more people keep leaving. So it really is a two-sided, and I don't know if there's a clear answer to it yet. I don't think everybody's come to that conclusion yet.
Nick?
I think the decision to not either approve or reject, and the decision to not even bring it for discussion, because things can be brought in front of the council without having resolutions taken on it and action taken on it, and you can bring up whatever you want. Not having input from the residents, not having input from the business leaders, I think was a mistake. I think it was a mistake to make those decisions without having, it opens up Pandora's Box, and I think it is a, it is a road we don't want to go down where we're making decisions that will impact the community without listening to the community first, because there's a lot of folks in certain positions, whether it be the chamber, whether it be the EDC, whether it be, you know, whatever that looks like, that were proponents of this. And I know from talking to these folks that they feel slighted because they weren't given an opportunity to hear it. That being said, it is an incredible loss in revenue for us. You never want to talk about overtaxing your residents, but it is an incredible loss in revenue for us. And I think that it is a shame that we're gonna lose those tax dollars, because as she said, you go all the time. You know, I'm from the city of Cincinnati. You know, a couple pennies out of everything you buy downtown Cincinnati, when you go to eat, goes to pay for Paul Brown Stadium. I mean, I understand that, and you don't even recognize it, but you're paying for those amenities. So I think it was an incredibly unfortunate situation.
I just want to say that it was never brought, even, it was not brought out by council as any kind of a recommendation. Council must approve a resolution from the commissioners to present it, and then there's proper channels that council does on everything they do. They never make decisions without public hearings, that things have to be published in the newspaper, and there has to be so many meetings and public hearings on everything before it would ever be able to be passed.
Just a second. I just think that maybe I wasn't clear enough, and so maybe I'll clear the air on that. I'm not suggesting, I'm not for one minute suggesting that county council and the county commissioners are behind the scenes, closed doors, doing nefarious works, okay? I have a lot of respect for the people in the council right now, so I just want to clear that up. What my suggestion was, is have we had these conversations about food and beverage with the Roger Richards and the Steve Trizini's and the folks that have major interest in this community, folks at the chamber and folks at the EDC? So I think maybe that's more what I was referring to, the behind closed doors comment comes out, I think.
All those conversations have been had for the last two years. There's been quite a few meetings.
There is a chat question that we had that brings out the tax issue, and we're just going to see whether this adds to the conversation a little bit. There was a question that came in, we want to make sure it gets in. Would you support tax increases? In what form? And to which services would those revenues be allocated? Would you support tax increases? In what form? And to which services would those revenues be allocated? And you can take that almost any way you want, but I know that sometimes people have seen it, the need for revenue is possible. The state has, in capping property taxes, created some havoc, but then they also created ways to get that money back, but it's all in the local entities passing taxes, whether it's a food and beverage tax or a will tax or whatever. So are you in favor of doing some type of tax increase? In what form? And what do you think those revenues should go toward? We'll start with you.
Well, I think certainly all the citizens that I talk with in Pershing and Abington and Boston and Dublin and Cambridge and Milton, you know, I think that they are underwater. And the average citizen, specifically in Western Wayne, and I'll come back to Richmond in a second, but even the folks on the south side of Richmond, you know, we talked to folks on South Fourth over there that are struggling too. And so I understand they're underwater. My concern when it comes to taxes is making sure that major corporations pay their fair share and making sure that when folks, that we're really looking at the tax abatement issue, that we're looking at that tax abatement question, and when we are allowing corporations to do business and pay little to no taxes, I think that the corporate taxes need to have a major overhaul, and I think it is incredibly important. I know what's gonna come out of that statement is that we need to give folks incentives to bring their businesses here to Wayne County. I'm not naive to that, I understand it. I understand that we need to offer tax abatements and tax incentives for corporations to come here. But I think taking a long, hard look, such as, just like the city of Richmond did, taking a long, hard look at what those incentives, what you need to do to get those incentives, I think that, you know, our corporate tax system is incredibly flawed, and it puts the burden on the average citizen.
Would you please put that question back up?
Actually, then the next question that followed with that...
Hold on, I'm gonna let her answer. Hold on one second. She asked for the question to go back up, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that.
I would like to see that question again.
And then I'm gonna let you follow.
It was a two-part question.
Yeah. Would you support tax increases? In what form? And which services would those revenues be allocated? So I think you wanted him to answer the second part of that before we move on, and I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think when we look at things like these corporations that come in, right, and they're not paying, they're getting those tax abatements and they're getting those bereavements from taxes. I think what you're missing are, you know, my dad's a firefighter in the city, in north of Cincinnati and the city of Westchester, and, you know, they buy new fire trucks once a year. I mean, they're printing money. And the reason they're doing that is because those corporations, they've attracted higher-end corporations, and they've attracted the higher-paying jobs, so the $100,000, $200,000 mark, and their tax brackets have increased drastically. So public services will benefit exponentially from having higher tax revenue from these higher-paying jobs and these higher-paying manufacturing facilities, for instance.
So that's where you're suggesting it go, the second part of that?
Sure, public services, absolutely.
So I am against any tax increases. I think we're at a level in our county that people can't afford any more taxes, and, you know, just in Western Wayne, we're looking at higher sewer rates soon, and, you know, there's things like that. I hear there's the school boards wanting to put out a bond, that's, they say, "Oh, that's just a little bit out of due year taxes." And then there's, our stormwater will be showing up on everyone's taxes this year, so I think an increase in taxes would be a terrible move. I think there's a way around that when the jail bond goes off, and there's a way to leverage those dollars from the jail bond to fund some other things that are needed as they come up. It's always important to fund our law enforcement. We do in this county at a very high rate, and that is a feather in our cap, because they protect us, they keep us safe, and that is an important, important arm of the county is our law enforcement division.
Do you have any more questions? Okay. Oh, yeah, I do. Okay. Before, we were talking about how you balance, as a potential county council person, would balance trying to pay more money for employees or workers' benefits against the need for being prudent with taxpayer money? Let's carry that over into infrastructure improvements. If you had a house that was built in the 1970s and you were trying to sell it now and you hadn't done any updates on it, you would be at the low end of what you could get for it from it, because you hadn't done the increases. Wayne County is beginning to do some increases on some of their infrastructure, bringing things up to ADA compliance, but there's still a lot more work to do and a lot more money to go. And the question is, how do, when they finally hit that mark where they're able to get there, how do you, as a county council person, look at how you put money away so that you can continue to do those updates over time, as opposed to getting 40 years down the road and having these multimillion-dollar construction projects that have to be done, against, again, being prudent with taxpayer money?
Okay. So as a council member, you're one of seven. So council needs to come together and create a master plan. We don't currently have a plan that they're working off of, and I've talked to many of them, and really, it's a needed thing to have a plan so that we know what we're gonna do in the next few years and we know what's coming up, and we find ways to channel funds towards those projects, because it is big. One awesome thing that our Highway Department has done, we've quit replacing a lot of the small bridges out in the country. They have started doing their own work. They put those giant culverts in. I don't know if you've seen those culverts, and they're doing that theirselves, and they're saving the county tons of money by doing those projects. So there's things like that that can happen, that can save money on one side so that it can be switched to the other. It's a rob Peter to pay Paul.
You mentioned, and I know we need to get to Nick, so he can answer that, but interesting point, the master plan, would that fall under the council's responsibility or would that be commissioners? Who needs to take the lead on this?
I think it's a joint project, because the commissioners are funded, you know, we approve their budget, but ultimately, it's up to the council where all the money goes, and so they'll know if they've got more money to give the commissioners to do more things with.
So I think it's always a touchy subject when folks want to talk about spending money, right? So I tend to, I tend to believe that when we look at infrastructure, we look at our schools, we look at the Sheriff's Department, we look at those, you know, I tend to look at it as an investment. I'm not spending money, I'm investing money, and we're investing in the future of this community. The taxpayers in this community are paying their taxes to the county, to the state, at the federal level, and expecting us to be prudent with their money, but they're also expecting us to make improvements with that money they spend. If I'm gonna pay my taxes in Milton, I want to see improvements in my roads, improvements in my bridges, and so that is a huge function of the county government. Having said that, as a small business owner, if I sell... Having said that, as a small business owner, if I sell every antique in my store and I sell, you know, $6,000 in one day and then I put it in the bank and I let it just sit there, and I don't go and take that money and go buy more merchandise and pay the light bill and pay the water bill and don't reinvest in my business, then I don't have a business very long. And so, I think investing back in our infrastructure and spending some of those hard-earned tax dollars, the citizens pay it and they want to see some return on their investment. So I think it's important to use those funds.
You're watching the Infocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates running for Wayne County Council District 3, Beth Leisure, Nick Elder. We're joined by Brian Ballinger, representing the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, our partners in these conversations. We are, this is a conversation that you can be a part of if you have a question, 973-8587. You can also send a comment through Facebook or on Twitter, @WCTVinfo. I'm going to kind of follow up and be a little bit more specific about the infrastructure piece of this. And talk specifically, if you all would, about the Wayne County Fairgrounds. There has been discussions between the commissioners and the council, and they're still working through some things. But talk to us about how you see the Wayne County Fairgrounds, what it could be or should be for this particular community, and what improvements you think could be make, you would make, if you think it could be more of an income generator than it is. And things have been talked about, like maybe needing a kitchen in Tom Raper Hall and some other things. Again, you're talking about spending money to make money, but talk about that particular facility and how, if you think, improvements should be made and how they could be funded. Nick, start with you.
I think, you know, when you start talking about, like at the fairgrounds, and you start talking about the Coleman Center and the Tom Raper Building and all those facilities, I think every day that they sit vacant with no one renting them is a lost form of income for us. We've had events, so I know what those buildings cost to rent. And I think if we had the kitchen facilities, I think if we had an updated facilities, you know, you're not in a pole barn, and if you update the Raper Building and if you update the Coleman Center specifically, I think we could absolutely use those as a better revenue generator. I think the fairgrounds in general has become a lost opportunity for revenue for us. I think that we are not renting it out properly. I don't know the specifics of, you know, every detail of what needs to be replaced at the, or repaired at the fairgrounds. But I think when you have those tremendous facilities, I mean, schools are always looking for locations to host X, Y, and Z. Or major organizations, we just did our New Deal Dinner for our party, we were looking for a space to do our, you know, sort of upscale dinner. Those things are potential revenue generators and can bring in a lot of money, so.
First of all, the fairgrounds is vitally important to our county because of the 4H. That, kids who go through 4H turn out to be, you know, awesome kids. It gives them opportunities, it teaches them responsibilities and all kinds of things. And we can't let that go by the wayside. Currently, the fairgrounds doesn't pay for itself very well. And there's, they're looking at other fairgrounds to see what they do, which is always smart, you don't reinvent the wheel, you see what other people are doing. Steve Higgins-Botham presented in his plans and his budget this year, some ideas for the fairground. Maybe naming rights to buildings, different things like that to generate some extra income. It's really hard. They got an estimate to build shower houses out there, $500,000. That's just not sitting around somewhere, you know? So there's going to have to be some more creative ways. Even a part-time person to market the fairgrounds would, I think, greatly increase the rental of the buildings and make it more viable on a day-to-day basis and not just in the summertime or when there's one big event.
You're watching the Infocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We are taking your questions, 973-8587. Comments also on our Facebook page or tweets, @WCTVinfo. We do have a chat question and we do want to get to it. So if we get that up. How will the candidates encourage more diversity in hiring county employees? How will the candidates encourage more diversity in hiring the county employees? Now, you all don't have a direct part of that, that probably falls a little bit more to the commissioners, but as council members, as elected officials, you might have a bully poll pit. So Beth, why don't we start with you and take a shot at that one?
I think currently, when jobs are posted, a lot of times, they're just filled inside with someone who already works there. And I don't think there's a lack of diversity. I think that, I mean, all the jobs are offered to anyone who wants them. You know, I don't feel like there's any kind of discrimination or anything in their hiring. But a lot of times, those jobs do come from inside and get filled, and maybe never made it to the outside where more people could apply for them. So maybe there needs to be a better job of how those jobs are posted and how long they're posted in-house before they're filled, things like that.
Our county employees, demographically, do not match our county makeup. When we see our makeup of, our racial makeup and our ethnicity makeup of our county employees, it is not emblematic of what our community at large looks like. Some of the struggles we have are not reaching out to the communities that are, you know, we don't reach out as well to the predominantly black communities. We don't reach out to the communities of our Latinos as much as we should. We're not going to those schools. When you take a, when you take a young kid from Lincoln High School and you put him in a program with the engineers or you get him into a manufacturing job and getting it back to the county, when you get him into the county and you allow him to do internships, and that's the opportunity he has, but the same kid at his level at Richmond High School doesn't have the same opportunities. We're not reaching into those communities. Something I heard at the NAACP Dinner, and I know you were there too, but something I heard at the NAACP Dinner was the talk of ensuring, and I think they're doing an okay job of this at the Sheriff's Department, and I think they're doing a really good job of it at the Richmond Police Department, is making sure they're reaching into the communities and finding folks at an early age and bringing them into the workforce and showing this kid that may live in Richmond that he can be a police officer, he can be a firefighter, he can come on board, he can be a sheriff's deputy, he can come and work at the Highway Department. There's no reason he can't drive a dump truck or she can't drive a dump truck. So I think we're doing a really poor job in general, not just Wayne County, but in general, as a country, of reaching into those more diverse communities and bringing them along with us. Because we are not representing our community and our workforce in general.
Okay, I want to come back around to something that we touched on earlier. I guess first of all, I'd like to hear your thoughts on quality of life, quality of place. And I realize, maybe to a degree, the county council has a limited role in this, but yet I feel like we need to be aware of it. So I'd just like to hear what your thoughts are on quality of life, quality of place, particularly as it relates to workforce development, retention, and then also attraction. Nick, earlier you mentioned and gave the example in Cincinnati where you have now higher-paying jobs. Was that a result of quality of life, quality of place improvements? So again, what do you think about that? How do we confront it? And if you think it's important, what do we do to make sure that we're providing an attractive place to live, work, and play?
Brian, thanks for asking that question. It's been on the front of my mind and a big reason for the run in this election. You know, I think that Valerie Schaefer's doing an excellent job at the EDC, and that whole crew is doing an excellent job, and they're doing a great job at the Wayne County Chamber. Here's what I think we potentially need to work on. We have this mindset that when we bring these manufacturing jobs in, then they will be incredible partners with us and they'll help us revitalize our communities. Once we get these manufacturing companies in here, they will assist us and help us to get all these other ancillary jobs in. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the path forward. I've been in, I've just seen community after community after community throughout my life, where the, the community leaders have seen 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and they've built the restaurants, they've brought in the chains, they've brought in the major supermarkets, they've brought in major retailers, they've brought in the discount stores. They've created a village and brought in multiple home subdivisions. And I've seen them bring that into communities. And then, when the major manufacturing companies look inside and say, well, that community is primed, there's housing available, there's eateries available, there's, that's what they're looking for. And it makes us incredibly attractive when we start investing from that ground level up, instead of just saying, when these folks come in, they're going to help us once they get here. And that's not the reality.
Before we go to Beth, I want to maybe have a follow-up question to that. Most of what you just suggested would come from private dollars. So I guess my question would be, from the public standpoint, which you would be a public representative, what is the public role in quality of life, quality of place?
Sure. From a public standpoint, Brian, what we would really want folks to do is, we really want to encourage entrepreneurship, and we want folks to want to build those businesses. And when we talk about it being like private companies, I think when we go to the EDC and we go to, as members of a county council or as members of county commissioners or in any type of leadership position, our job is going to be to sell this community when the folks come in. And so it is our responsibility. It is the private citizen's responsibility, our responsibility in leadership, to reach out to those folks and say, we want the Kruger, we want a Target, we want these things, and show that interest. And if we can switch that mindset to wanting to build those ancillary services first, I think we can really achieve great things together.
When we get off on social issues and things, first of all, that's kind of getting way out of the scope of what county council does. I think it tends to become more glamorous than it is. It's really just about the money and the budgets and the county government, running the county government efficiently. There are a lot of regional groups popping up that are, I think, the key to people wanting to come here and live here. When these companies come here and look, I mean, Valerie has so many people call, but they want to know how they're going to find workers. They don't want, they don't want to just come here and make our place awesome. They want to know that we have the workers that they need to fill the jobs they want to create. Sugar Creek's trying to hire more people, they're growing greatly. But they're getting those people from other counties, because we don't even have enough people that live in our own county to supply all those workers. The regional groups working together, you know, people don't know where county lines are, they don't know where state lines are. When they drive around or they think, oh, that's 20 miles away, they don't think, I'm crossing a county line, you know? It's just about the whole area, because when you're a small area, we're not a big metro city, we all need to pull together and work together and create some of the things we need. The housing study that came out, we need more housing. I know, in Cambridge City, there are virtually no new housing additions going up, you know? Everybody wants people to come get a job at Sugar Creek, live in Cambridge, and put their kids in our schools, which sounds awesome. But they do have to have a place to live. And so, until we can get those more basic needs in our county, the other stuff will follow.
You're watching the Infocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. I'm going to try to come back to both of you all somewhat with that question and do a follow-up and see if I can maybe think about phrasing it a different way. County council can, if the commissioners come to them with an idea, fund certain things that could be quality of life, workforce development. They have put money into manufacturing matters, they have put money into other things. So let's try it this way. As a potential county council member, are there two or three initiatives that you are aware of that you might support, being in county government or being in the county budget, that could help with workforce development or making this area more attractive so that the Sugar Creeks can find their workers here? So yes, it is about the budget, but it is about, again, as we talked about before, where you're willing to put some of those dollars and what you're willing to stand behind. So are there a couple of things happening right now? There's an animal shelter that is in the commissioner's budget, county council has to approve it, but it's in the commissioner's budget. What are a couple of things that you think are important that remain in that budget or maybe get increases in that budget that you would continue to support?
I think that there's ways to work on this quality of place issue with some of the consolidated edit money. There's ways to do public and private partnerships. We're going to have to start thinking out of the box and being a lot more creative with the way we use our dollars, because they aren't going to just grow exponentially over the years. We don't get, we don't get to sell things and make money on the county. We just, we get what we're given by, you know, the property taxing with the caps and all that. So, I mean, I just feel like there are a few things like that. The budget is tight, and every department's asking for more. And I think the commissioners first have to look at the most needful things. They're going to have to prioritize the things that they need done first and let us know what those things are before we can make a good decision on, you know, which items get done.
You know, with manufacturing matters and workforce development programs, I think those are incredibly important to find and identify those, specifically those young people who want to stay here and work here, and they don't want to leave, and they don't want to go somewhere else to find work. I think those are incredibly important programs to make sure are adequately funded. You know, one topic we haven't hit on when it comes to the workforce development piece, and being in Wayne County, I know this issue will probably come up, so I'm probably putting the cart before the horse. But when we talk about finding workers, that's usually code here in Wayne County for folks cannot stay off drugs long enough to keep a job. That's usually what that's code for. It is a sad reality that we live in, but I think funding efforts to combat the opioid crisis we're having right here in Wayne County, if we could get folks clean, if we could get folks sober, if we could get folks off of the heroin and off of any other narcotic that they're on, I think we could salvage, A, most importantly, salvage their lives and salvage them as a human being. But B, I think we could add those into our roles. Beldon's doing a great job of it. I applaud them, and it's been very public and it's made national news. Beldon's doing a great job of it. We need to partner as a county and as private businesses with our citizens to say, we understand that it's an addiction issue and it's a public health crisis, and we need to make sure that the funding is there so that we can get the folks clean. It's easy to say, you're not clean, you can't have a job, see, he's lazy, he won't work. But we need to bring these folks with us, and we need to make sure that we're funding this fight. It's a fight for our lives.
We've got about 11 minutes left in the show. We've got a couple of questions that have come in, and we want to try to get to those. So let's get the first one up, see where we go. And Nick, you'll start with this one. The younger generation in Wayne County go off to college outside of the county and never return. What can you do as a future county council member to entice and keep people in Wayne County? We've touched on this a little bit, but is there another place you want to go that maybe we haven't gone?
Well, you know, when you talk about the young person issue moving into Wayne County, I mean, I can only tell you personally, I'm 34 years old. I didn't grow up here, obviously, that's been brought up, but I chose to come here. You know, I opened a business here and we moved here. Tanya is from Connorsville, so we moved close to her family. But I think of it from my perspective. What would entice me at my age and at my stage in life to come here, raise a family, start a family? I think folks are looking at our school systems, and I think folks are looking at our quality of place issues. And if I wanted to come move to Milton, Indiana, I love Milton, by the way, but if I was, if I was on the outside looking in and I didn't own a business here, why would I want to move to Milton, Indiana? What is there for me, for my family, to go? The small things that we don't think about. You know, the food establishments, the, you know, those kind of things, the things to do. I think oftentimes, there's a lot to do in the city of Richmond, and I think it doesn't necessarily translate out to the county. You know, those quality of place issues for me are huge as a young person in this county. It's huge. You can't tell me that somebody would be looking at a place like Pershing, Milton, Cambridge and say, they have enough things for me to do as a young family right now. And that's not being pessimistic, that's just realistic.
When you live in a rural area like we do, as goes the city, the county seat, so goes the county. So I think that even though we have these bedroom communities out there, that there's still a huge connection to Richmond, and I think that's where the focus of everything, you know, is going to be. We're obviously not going to get a water park in Cambridge or anything like that. I think there's, there's things these kids will learn. You know, the grass is always greener and they want to get out from underneath mom and dad's feet. And, you know, if that's what is meant for their life, you know, more power to them. I think they're going to find out that it is... I think they're going to find out that it is, our cost of living here is one of the lowest in the country and when it comes down to it and they're actually making the check and paying the bills, they're going to realize how far their money doesn't go. On the other hand, what they're doing in the big cities, you know, they're building these condo buildings where they have no responsibilities, no mowing, you know, no upkeep on a house or anything like that and they can walk out their door and walk to a pizza place or a store or whatever. And so we're going to have to really use our creativity and create some things with walkability and some downtown living and things that draw those kind of people to our city.
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're down to about seven minutes, so we're going to get some quick answers. We've got another question that we're going to try to get to. "Who is going to hold internet providers accountable to serve rural Wayne County? Who is going to hold internet providers accountable to serve rural Wayne County?" And as we talk about the ability to bring people in, obviously broadband services and that type thing are very important. Is there something that government, county government, whatever, could do in that instance?
It's not a council, it's nothing that the council can do to provide internet to rural communities. I think it's very important because I live in one and I'm down to one choice, but it is available. It's just not probably affordable to a lot of people. But I don't think we can, we can't hold Frontier accountable to, I couldn't even hold them accountable to get me a phone line to my house. So, you know, county council's not going to be able to do that.
It goes back to our quality of place issues. We have folks that live on the south side of Milton, down by the, down by the church, and they have been fighting for the last year. I go to every one of the Milton Town Council meetings, they've been fighting for the last year because they have no rural connectivity. We have folks that are trying to work from home, to the point that was brought up earlier. It is very economical to live here, to live in, especially in western Wayne County. What a lot of folks are choosing to do is work from home. And when they work from home, they have to have reliable broadband internet services. And if they don't, then they're going to say, I can't continue to live here and work remotely. And so those are back to the quality of place issue. So although it's not necessarily a county council perspective, from a leadership aspect, it is. It's our responsibility to try to listen to those citizens.
Trying to see if they have anything else in the air that they want to tell me. Okay. Real quickly, and I know this is probably going to be very, very fast, but this is probably going to be the last thing we get to ask, as you have listened to the budget discussions for the coming year and have, I assume, looked at at least the 2018 budget, which is available out there. Is there anything about the financial situation of Wayne County government that concerns you, real quickly? And is there anything about Wayne County's fiscal situation that you find to be positive? Is there anything, real quickly, that concerns you? Is there anything that you find to be positive? Nick, I think we start with you.
Very specific concern for me is funding for the Sheriff's Department. I think we have two deputies on the road at any given time and I think that's a mistake. I think we need to look at the budget for the Sheriff's Department. That's very specific. On a positive, from a businessman's perspective, I think is incredible that we have so much money in reserves and I think it's incredible that we have been very fiscally conservative up to this point and I would hope that that would continue and that we would not run into a situation like our friends in southern county, a county just south of us run into where they have no money.
Okay.
Yeah, our county is in great shape and that's something to be proud of. The guys who are in there now have done an excellent job with the money. We have reserves if, you know, a crisis happens and there's money there to run the government for the next six months, which is, you know, more than a lot of people can say. I don't have any concerns about the budgets for this year. It was just approved last night at the meeting and I think they did a really good job trying to spread it around and give people, try to give people what they were asking for and give the raises and things that we really just needed to do in this county. I'm proud of them, I think they do a good job.
Okay. Unless you've got a yes or no question?
I don't.
That's going to wrap it up for us. Beth Leisure, Nick Elder, running for Wayne County Council District 3. Beth on the Republican side, Nick on the Democrat side. Thank you both very much to go through this process, and I've said it before, but to actually put your name on the ballot, to go door-to-door, talk to people and to give up that much of your time. Not everybody is willing to do that, so thank you very much for believing in this community enough that you would be willing to do that. Brian, once again, thank you for being here, thank the chamber for being our partners in this. I think this has been informative for the community.
Sure.
Want to remind you that we do have one more InFocus Candidate Forum, wow, it seems like just weeks ago we were saying we had eight more of these to go. We have one more InFocus Candidate Forum to go. That will be next Thursday night here at 6:00 PM when we will be talking with current State Senator Jeff Rotz and Jake Hoag, who are running for Indiana Senate District 27. So that will begin at 6:00 PM. Absentee ballot, early voting, as it is called, has begun. That is Monday, 8:30 to 5:00 PM, Tuesday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, in the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street in Richmond. Also Saturday, October 27th, and November 3rd, from 9:00 to 4:00. And the last day is November 5th, from 8:30 until 12:00. Remember, beginning next week, we'll remind you where the early vote centers will be as well as where you can vote on Election Day because of course, those are expanded locations. For more information, 973-9304 or visit the Wayne County Clerk's Office. A reminder also that Melissa Vance and I will be here on election evening for our election coverage. It will begin at 6:00 PM. We'll start by talking to the party chairs and then we'll kind of expand it out, maybe have a chance to speak to some of the candidates that you have not heard from, those who were not in contested races, running for, that have been part of the Wayne County Commissioners, Wayne County Council and some other races, and find out how they feel about their office and what it is that they can do. Couple of things we want to remind you about as we head into the weekend, the Wayne County Historical Museum's Haunted Weekend is kicking off this weekend. That's always a great deal of fun, they do a great job down there. New lights on in the first half hour. That is this weekend and next weekend, 6:30 until 9:00 PM. There's a Halloween party tomorrow night from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Jeffers Club. It is open to the community, wear your costume, go out and have some fun. Both of these folks are from the Cambridge City area, so we need to say that the Cambridge City Public Library during the month of October has a special event going on, sounds really fun. You can bring in your own toilet roll to magically transform it into a Halloween bat or spider at their makerspace, their craft, their staff are crafting experts and they do a very nice job over at the Cambridge City Public Library. So want to remind you of that. Richmond Civic Theater, since we're talking about the holiday season, has a play that is opening this weekend, Dracula, on the main stage. That is this weekend, the 19th and 20th, and then next weekend, the 26th through the 28th. For more information, go to rct.org. And I can tell you that that is something that you don't see very often, but they have kind of put a parental discretion advised sticker out on that particular one. So before you do that, you might want to think about that. And lastly, the Fall Foliage 5K is happening this Saturday, registration at 7:30 with the race starting at 9:00. That's at Cope Environmental Center. And then following that, it's the Kids Halloween Fest, also at Cope from 10:00 until 3:00. If you'd like to see replays of this particular show, you can find it tonight at 10:30 and then again tomorrow night. The audio of this program will be available on G101.3 and ESPN 100.9, beginning Sunday morning at 6:00 PM. You'll also be able to find this show on WGTV online. Thank you very much for spending part of your Thursday evening with us, we appreciate it. Have a great weekend.